The Cuyahoga County Committee of the Hall meeting for Thursday, October 21st, 2021, will please come to order, and I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to remind everyone that all in attendance, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the county YouTube webpage. Calling the roll, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Schron. Mr. Schron is absent at the moment. Ms. Conwell? Ms. Conwell is absent at the moment. Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Stevens is absent at the moment. Ms. Simon? Absent at the moment. Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Present.
Mr. Tuma?
Here.
Council President Jones?
Here.
You have a quarrel.
Thank you very much. Item three on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anybody signed in?
No, Mr. Chair, no public comment was received.
Thank you very much. And item number four is matters referred to committee. And the first item is Resolution 2021-0234. And with the cooperation of the council president, for which I thank you, we decided to place this item on the committee of the hall agenda rather than the finance and budget agenda, just so that we wouldn't have to schedule a separate meeting and the scheduling flow would be easier. I understand that Ms. Janelle Green is presenting on this legislation. I would ask you to come forward, and I would also note that Councilwoman Conwell is present. Ms. Green, thank you.
Thank you. First, Janelle Green, Department of IT.
Excuse me, Janelle. Mr. Chair, may I read the item into the record first?
Please read the item into the record.
Thank you. Resolution 2021-0234, authorizing an amendment to Agreement Number 968 with State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Office of Information Technology for software licenses and maintenance on an IBM LPAR mainframe. It's for the period March 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2020, to extend the time period to August 31st, 2022, and for additional funds in the amount not to exceed $700,000.
And please make sure the button is on. It didn't seem to be coming through when you started. Okay, thank you.
Maybe by my mask. But Janelle Green, Department of IT, firstly, thank you for squeezing us in today, as we know that you have a very tight schedule with the budget hearings. This is an amendment to the agreement with the State of Ohio. This will allow us to extend the agreement for the mainframe or the LPAR system. Mainframe is where our data is housed for FAMIS, and so therefore payroll is still being utilized for that system, as well as a Public Works application is on that system. This agreement will extend the contract with the State of Ohio through August 31st of 2022, allowing us to transition the payroll system into NFOR, and also allow us to migrate data into our data lake or data warehouse for archiving purposes. This is a month-to-month contract for 20 months, so we're getting a monthly rate of $35,000. So we do have a 30-day termination clause, so whenever we are prepared to come off that system, we can terminate at that time.
So the current contract expired 12/31/2020. Why were we so slow in bringing this to us?
Well, we didn't get the actual contract from the state until, I believe it was July. So this would have hit when it got to us around the council hiatus. So as soon as we were able, and we did also run into some system issues, so as soon as we were able to enter it and get it over into the agenda, we did so.
Okay, I'm noting that Councilman Schron is with us, and now opening to questions from my colleagues. Hearing none, this is a routine item that we need to continue our operations, and so I'm going to make a motion to recommend Resolution 2021-0234 to the full council with a recommendation for second reading suspension. Do I have a second?
Brown, second.
Second from Brown. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. The item is recommended. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now I would like to read Resolution 2021-0238 into the record.
Resolution 2021-0238, adopting the 2022-2023 biennial operating budget and capital improvements
Thank you very much. That continues to be before us. I would like to say thank you to all the directors. We received all of their opening presentations in advance, and we have printed copies on your desks. And I would also like to note that for those who are listening on our livestream, that we have all of these materials up on our website. If you go to the county council homepage, on the right-hand corner of that page, there's a tab marked Biennial Budget 2022 to '23. And if you click on that, you can find the budget book, the schedule, the videos, the departmental presentation. It has all of the information that we're working with, and it's very accessible and easy to get to. So I would encourage you to make use of that. So first, on our agenda today, we have the Adams Board, Scott Osicki.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Scott Osicki, I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Alcohol, Drug Addiction, and Menohost Services Board, and I have a PowerPoint that I would like to share with you all today. There you go. So first of all, I want to thank Council President Jones, Finance and Budget Chair Dale Miller, and all of the council members for your continued support of the Adams Board, especially during this epidemic that we're living through, and also allowing me to speak to you today about our calendar year 2223 allocation to the Adams Board. I also want to thank County Executive Buddhist, David Merriman, and the rest of the executive staff for their continued support as well. So the county executive is recommending stable funding to the Adams Board at just over $43.4 million, which is the same amount we received last year, which was increased by $4.1 million from a previous $39.3 million as a result of the passage of the replacement Health and Human Services levy in April of 2019. The increase was originally planned to be $5.1 million, but we agreed with the allocation. It was mentioned that we could revisit the $1 million difference during this year's budget cycle. Here are the services that the Adams Board is able to provide because of the county allocation from the Health and Human Services levies. The first thing is our mental health and substance use disorder treatments for people not covered by Medicaid. We'd also provide funding for mental health crisis services, such as our psychiatric emergency room, our various hotlines, and the warm line that we have. And it's also the same as the substance use disorder crisis services. And then also, it funds peer support services. It also funds prevention services for children. We have school-based funding, after-school, school-based services, after-school services, early childhood mental health services, and also prevention services for adults. It also funds our residential and our housing programs, which are our adult care homes, and also our sober living environments. And it also funds employment and job training for our clients. So I want to give you an update on the $4.1 million usage, so you can see how we use that. As of today, we have used $3.3 million, $758,762 of those funds, whether they have been actually used or they're allocated. Since it's the responsibility of the Adams Board to gauge the need for services in our community and plan to meet that need, we used the $4.1 million in calendar year '21 to areas that would have the most impact. And those are, we gave $600,000 for increased funding for four additional dedicated children's crisis beds, which brought our total to 16 crisis beds for children. We've also contracted for $438,000 for specialized housing for LGBTQ individuals, pregnant women, trauma-informed individuals who have gone through human trafficking, women and their custodial children, bilingual speech and hearing impaired individuals, as well as fathers and their custodial children. We expanded our funding to Eden by $500,000 for the expansion of the Housing Assistance Program. And so far, we spent $281,875 for stipends to law enforcement for completing CIT training, as well as the use of Tri-C Scenario Village and actors for the role-playing exercises that's part of the training. We have trained nearly 600 law enforcement officers from 46 departments since January of this year. We've also spent $166,687 for suicide and opiate awareness prevention campaigns. We also funded a program that provided services and housing for individuals who've experienced trauma in their lives and don't have a safe place to live for over $203,000. We provided nearly $43,000 towards the Relax Box Program, which paid for 41 boxes that have been installed throughout the community, including the rock hall, gas station, sober housing, outpatient clinics, and even a laundromat. It also paid for printing of literature and a portion of a salary for a metro health employee to place and maintain the boxes. We also provided a total of $1.5 million, or $1,460,000 to Belfair, and $480,000 to Applewood to address their severe staffing shortages in the children's residential treatment programs. Also wanted to give you an update on the opiate funding. So we have two-year contracts that we have with Thrive ER, Stella Maris, and St. Vincent, and that's funded through the $10.5 million that we were able to draw down through the opiate settlement funds, and those contracts will end on February 28th, '22. We anticipate that there will be about $2.8 million available from the funds at the beginning of 2022, and have been told by the administration that we may extend these contracts with no additional funding. But because the Adams Board, we really believe in these programs, we've decided to extend the contracts to the end of December '22 with additional board funds, and so far, we budgeted $1.2 million for that out of our existing funds. So in looking forward to '22, '23, so, you know, we all realize, right, that COVID-19, the pandemic, has certainly changed our lives and the way that we work and the way that we work with our contract agencies. As well as our contract agencies in '21, our providers, they've continued to adapt and provide services to people in our community, whether those would be telehealth services or face-to-face when actually needed. But according to the National Institute of Mental Health, the need for services may continue to increase and change. Individuals who experience traumatic events and severe stressors, such as caring for the sick, such as losing patients and/or loved ones, and also experiencing prolonged disruptions in their life, are more likely to experience lasting behavioral health symptoms. Individuals are more likely to develop chronic or severe reactions if they are subject to risk factors, such as financial difficulties, inadequate social supports, lack of food or safe housing, and a history of mental illness or substance abuse disorders. So the Adams Board, we're very mindful as we're planning for the funding coming up for the next few years. In fact, just yesterday evening, I presented a first draft of the Adams Board calendar year '22 proposed funding to our Board of Directors yesterday afternoon. We issued an RFP for services, and we received 260 responses, and we're going to be recommending funding for 202 of those programs through contracts with providers in the amount of $60.4 million. I also want to let you know about the workforce shortage that we're experiencing in the behavioral health system, just like many other workforce issues throughout the country and throughout, right here in Cuyahoga County. In order to respond to that, we've created a Behavioral Health Workforce Development Task Force, and that has representatives from our agencies, and we're getting together to brainstorm to see how we could attract and retain workers in our provider agencies. We've also partnered with the Cleveland School District Career Connects Program, and we're in the process of developing a video series that highlights behavioral health field for elementary, middle, and high school students to spark an interest in the field. So following up on that workforce shortage, and if you are entertaining requests for additional funding, we would like to request the $1 million that was not provided in last year's budget from the increased levy. We would utilize this $1 million towards our efforts to retain and increase the behavioral health workforce. We would develop a method to identify providers that would benefit directly from this funding, to increase wages for existing staff, attract new staff, offer paid internships, or for the long term, we could also work to develop a scholarship program. Just today, we were in a Zoom meeting or a webinar with the state that is also trying to tackle this issue of workforce development. So I thank you for letting me present this, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions by my colleagues. Ms. Conwell.
Through the chair to Director, what are your current reserves for the Adams Board, and when or what initiates their use?
Yes. So right now, we have $51 million in reserve, and this was, we were able to replenish our reserves over the past three and a half years. We were able to replenish those reserves because we switched to a pooled funding payment for our agencies who are providing the clinical services. So with the expansion of Medicaid expansion, right, that more individuals are eligible for Medicaid. So rather than allocating an amount to each individual that would, each provider that would be there, they're able to draw down on a pooled funding that we have set aside. Now, what we would do with this reserve would be that we could provide increases or funding adjustments when requested during the calendar year. Oftentimes, throughout the year, agencies will come to us and said that the amount of money that we have for this individual program isn't meeting the needs of the community. So would you consider giving us additional funding? And we do that quite often. Also, we entertain funding for new programs or initiatives that we don't know about or that they didn't respond to our RFPs. So we have that money there also to provide those services. We're also in the process, and this would be a major expense, but we're in the process of looking for a building to relocate one of our mental health residential treatment buildings to a neighborhood that would be more conducive to people living and being treated with mental illness. The provider of those services at that residential treatment said the area is just not working out. It's not conducive for folks who are living with mental illness. And then also, you know, the opiate settlement funding is going to expire on February 28th, and we already put, February 28th, 2022, we already put the additional $1.2 million in, but if that wasn't enough, we would use the reserves towards that as well.
Through the chair, do you own the current building that you're trying, or treatment center that you're trying to?
Yes.
So you're trying to sell that?
We would, but still, we're looking for a suitable place first, so we could still provide the services in that current building. And then our team has gone out and looked at several locations so far, and we'll be presenting that to our board if those are still suitable places.
You're trying to buy a new one and sell the other one without moving, not utilizing the services? On your last allocation, last budget from the county, how much was utilized for direct program support, and how much was given to salaries?
None of it was given to salaries of the increase. The part which I presented is all of those services that I presented of those programs in the PowerPoint was of the five-point, the usage of the $4.1 million. And as of today, we've used $3.7 million, but we still have a couple months left to go in the year that that amount of money will also be drawn on.
And so the million dollars, through the chair, the million dollars that you're requesting from us today, you said you were going to use it to retain and retrain, and I thought you also said you...
Oh, this is for provider agencies, Councilman Conwell, not the Adams Board.
So Director, the requested $1 million, is that $1 million per year, or is that $500,000 per year and a million for the biennium?
$1 million per year. So it would bring our allocation up to the $44 million.
Okay.
Each year, yes.
Other questions by my colleagues? Ms. Baker?
Thank you, and thanks for being here today. The Diversion Center and your role in that, can you expand a little bit on that?
Sure, sure. So we were selected by the county to oversee the development and the operations of the Diversion Center. So we have contracts with Orianna House to provide the services and also utilizing their building on East 55th Street. We also contract with Frontline Services, which operates a 24-hour hotline. It's our regular crisis hotline, but we added additional staff there so they would be able to answer police calls. So how it works is that the law enforcement would call that number if they want to cross someone who is exhibiting signs or symptoms of a mental illness or an addiction issue, and who, it originally was set up as if a person was involved in a low-level offense. So when they call Frontline, Frontline offers a brief screening on the phone to see if the individual would be eligible to go to the Diversion Center. So then Frontline calls the, calls the Diversion Center, let them know that they're bringing someone in. So when they bring somebody in, and the officer's time spent there is very little, because the whole purpose is to let them drop off somebody and get back to their duties, then the person, the individuals there are given a complete assessment, and it's sort of like triages of what sort of services that they need. So then there's detox services that are available there. There's counseling services available there. Anybody can stay from a matter of hours until up to seven or nine days if that was needed. It's important to remember that the Diversion Center is voluntary. So it's voluntary for the individual at the time that they're interacting with the police, but it's also voluntary is when they get to the Diversion Center as well. So if they decide that they didn't want to seek treatment, they are free to leave.
So if I may just follow up, just to get an understanding. So the opiate settlement dollars, that was part of the funding for the Diversion Center, am I right?
It's my understanding, yes, and that was the county executive's decision for that. It had nothing to do with our $10.5 that we received.
Okay. And the funding that you're, that sounds like will be depleted by February of 2022, is that, are those dollars that could go into the Diversion Center? Is that part of that? Is there any issue with not having enough for those that are coming to the Diversion Center?
The opiate settlement dollars, we already have those programs set up, right? So we have some programs that is Stella Maris. We have the Thrive ER, which provides a peer support worker in the emergency rooms, and then also St. Vincent, right? So those would be, those dollars would be for those continuations of those programs.
But that'll only get you through till February 2022?
The current, right, the current that we would have left. We're estimating that they would have $2.9 million, I think, left over, not left over, unspent at the beginning of the year. So we're anticipating that we would have to put in the additional money to make it through the rest of the year.
And then what about 2023?
2023, we would have to look at our existing funding and look at the programs again to make sure that we still feel that they're best and that really working, and that we would fund them out of our regular allocations that we have.
If I may ask...
You may continue.
Medical examiner come before us and really give us a very disturbing opiate account of those that he finds, unfortunately, we couldn't help or save. Do you find that the opiate addictions out there are increasing, and that perhaps this funding, is it enough for you to be able to lessen the impact that we've been told is there?
So just want to point out, right, just the $4.1 million, those were for those specialized programs, right? And we fund lots of other treatment programs and recovery support programs and sober housing with... within the community. As far as like the opiate addiction increasing, it's sort of shifted a little bit, right? Because the demographics of it changed, because the drug dealers are putting fentanyl in a lot of different things that people don't know. So it's not people seeking out heroin, right, or any other kind of opiates. So that's why the increase in the overdoses or they also with the deaths, because people don't know what they're taking. So we offer harm reduction efforts that we do. We have grassroots harm reduction efforts where we have fentanyl test strip programs, and they're all out in the community at barber shops and laundromats and things like that. So, you know, we certainly don't condone drug use, but we want to make sure that people know what they're taking so they have a chance to make an informed decision, so that they're free and they're able to test their drugs to see what they have.
Okay, that's all for now. Thank you, appreciate it.
So I'd like to follow up on that and say that I also was disturbed by the reports that indicate that at best we're leveling off at a high level on a number of opiate fatalities. And so my question is, is there any indication that the money we've put in and the things we're doing are working? And are there other things that we should be doing that we're not doing?
That's a very good question, right? So we know that our fentanyl test strips are being used, right? So one could assume that if they're being used and people might be returning for additional ones, that they're working, right? So we're hoping that we have prevented an overdose or a possible death, right? We know that individuals living in sober environments, once they get into the sober environment, that it's very successful then to continue their treatment. We know that our providers are providing the best of the services that they possibly can to reach out to individuals. The whole thing with addictions also is the, right, the person has to want to have the treatment, right? So that's why when we have like the opiate awareness or suicide prevention campaigns, which it doesn't look like we spent a lot of money on that, that's because our staff has gotten great deals from the media that we're working with. So we do know that when we advertise the hotline number, we know that frontline gets additional calls. So we know that people are seeking information on the, on addictions or looking for a place for treatment because they do the referral. But, you know, it's everybody's guess as to what will happen, right? What is the exact thing to do? If we knew how to solve the opiate issue, we wouldn't be asking for money, right? Because we would be, we would be able to market that and sell that. So it's just a very, it's a very nasty disease, right? And it's also that it's really hard to recover from, right? You could be living in recovery, but it's an addiction, it's really hard to get over, and you could relapse, and then you need to come back for more treatment. So what else we could do? I don't know. It's just reaching out to the community to let everybody know how dangerous this is and how it can affect everybody, right? No matter what socioeconomic income or anything like that.
Councilman Sweeney.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. CEO. First, a note, and thank you for taking care of the constituent.
Councilmember, can you turn on your microphone, please?
It's on, but I wasn't talking into it, sorry. Metaphor. For my chair and my colleague, I just wanted to come out and thank you for the constituent and the responsiveness you gave me, and that's really appreciated. Just on the theme of the opioids, I don't think it's getting better, and it's still a problem. And the dollars that are going there, can you tell me specifically with the outreach and the campaigns, how's the money spent or distributed?
Yes. So it's spent on things that we spend them on billboards, we spend them on bus placards. We're also this year doing the ads at football games, high school football games. It's spent on radio commercials that are directed to certain target audiences on like the satellite radios and things like that. It's also, there's materials that are developed that we distribute when we go out in the community.
Good. And through the chair to the CEO, so it's run out of the Adams Board, it's not, it was my understanding that it was distributed to 29 different vendors to do their own thing. Is that the case? Is that inaccurate?
I'm not familiar with what you talk about.
That's good. I'm just trying, because a single focus to try to handle this crisis is, I believe, the greatest opportunity to be successful.
Yes, we coordinate that. And in fact, we even coordinate campaigns for also Lake County, Joga County, whatever, because we're part of the Northeast Ohio Collaborative, and our staff is the one that develops all the materials, and we do the contracting for all those areas as well. So, yes.
So it's a single, it's you as the entity?
It's a single message, right.
Give them the message out. And through the chair, I don't see it as much as the dollar amount that's there compared to the crisis that's happening. Prevention and prevention campaign could be successful. I just think it's underfunded.
Yeah.
And the two things, growing up as a kid, I still remember to this day, Nancy Reagan's just saying no to drugs when you open up your candy.
Yes.
This is your brain, and this is your brain on drugs.
Yes.
So that got into my head, and it's carried with me forever.
Yes.
I don't think I see that of a magnitude.
Yeah, because, well, we're doing targeted advertising. So it's like, it's in, we target neighborhoods where there have been the highest incidence of overdose, either deaths or overdose, the actual overdose is what they survived from. We target, the target audiences that are most at risk for, for both suicide and opiate. So like if you're listening to, like I say, a podcast or a radio, whatever, and you're in that age group, it'll get shown specifically to you. So that's why a lot of maybe, you know, that people don't see all of them, but we could certainly increase our efforts. We always would like to increase our effort. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We always, we're always looking for new ways to do that. And on the slide was one of the one for the suicide prevention, you know, life is better with you here. So then that was actually targeted for African-American youth. So those were distributed in places where they would actually see them. And then with the opiate ones too, like I said, those are targeted to certain areas. Just like with our nalox boxes that we put out, they're go to the communities that have the highest risk of someone overdosing. But we could certainly expand it much longer, much farther. You know, advertising is expensive, and like I said, we got some pretty good deals.
You're maximizing each of the dollars that you have, and this is the biennial budget. So we have specifically talking about the budgets allocated for this, dollars allocated through this budget.
Yes.
I think there's opioids funds that can be added to it, but you wouldn't be adverse to increase in your ability to...
Oh, no, we, yeah, we could certainly go a lot better. I'm sorry for interrupting, but yes.
Would you, I mean, from your professional opinion, if more dollars were given and it was strategically placed, would we have an outcome that would reduce the, hopefully, which in your profession of vision would reduce the deaths from opiate addiction?
It's really so hard to say that, right? Because this is, this is a national problem, right? And every, all communities are going through the same thing. And it all depends, and when you get that person, right, to let them know what is happening and give them the harm reduction techniques, you know, like I was talking about before. But there's no way to predict, right? We assume, we assume that that definitely would make a difference. Because even if we look at now, if we're seeing that the deaths and overdoses are rising, it could possibly have even been worse if we didn't reach out to the community to provide those services.
The last question is through the chair. This is an epidemic throughout the country and the world, I imagine. Best practices, similar-sized counties that have similar-sized problems in regards to the...
Yes, yes.
Dollar amounts invested, do we see any kind of decrease because they have 10 million compared to the folks that only do 1 million, or is it the...
Yeah, I don't have that offhand, but we could, I could certainly look at that.
Yeah, and our staff could do that as well. I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, we could do that.
Do the work to see how we can have an impact.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting me drone on a little bit, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate your comments.
Oh, sure, yeah. But I can tell you that the Adams Board that of Cuyahoga County has the largest outreach than any other county in the state, as well as media visibility, you know, in positive stories that we've had in the media, we have hundreds and hundreds of them. So, you know, that the Adams Board, we do try to reach out to as many as we can.
Oh, I'm not...
Oh, no.
I am commending you on your efforts.
Oh, yes, sir.
But also trying to highlight a problem that if we can invest more, we can have better results.
Yes, and, yes, and we would certainly be, we would certainly do that, and we would increase our efforts more, yes.
So on that point, I've long been an advocate of that. When we get in a little better shape on COVID, we would do well to use the faith-based community and CDCs to do a very broad-based neighborhood outreach program. So I'm going to call on Ms. Conwell is next, followed by Baker, and then Shran.
All right, through the chair to the director, I think you just answered this in your response to Councilman Sweeney, but I'm going to ask it anyway.
Okay.
How do you measure opioid use decreasing in the target areas?
So we know that when, we know that when we place ads in targeted areas, we know that the calls increase to the hotline. That's really our only way of measuring when the message is out there, right? Because then we know that people are seeing it, and they may not even call right away, but they may remember that number, or they'll write it down, or they'll keep it. So that's how we measure the success of a campaign.
Are you connecting with the medical examiner for those, to see if the deaths have went down due to opioid use in those targeted areas?
We have staff who sit on the death review committee, and that's for suicide and also the opiate deaths. And then when we get those, the staff looks, and that's one of the indicators that we use as to where we're going to put the campaigns at. So when we see there's a higher, we're looking at it that way, I guess, but we could certainly look at it the way you're saying as well, to see if those, if the incidents have gone down in those areas. That's, that's very good. Yes, we will do that.
Through the chair, pre-pandemic suicide numbers were up. What is the status of the, of the suicide rate now? And is any of this million-dollar requests going to be utilized toward suicide?
The million dollars, we're only going to be using it for workforce development. That's where we want to put that funds, to workforce development, because we need to have workers, competent workers and workers that are paid to provide the services, because they're all getting burned out right now. The suicide rates, what we're finding is that it's, the suicide attempts are going up. So maybe they're, you know, they're trying, they're reaching out for help then. So we know the attempts are going up, and it was especially in the African-American community for both young women and young men.
Okay, so they're going up, and you're not putting any money toward that. I know last time you came before us, you did something in regards to suicides.
Yes.
So what's the conversation around the board about bringing this, these attempts of suicide down?
Our greatest issue is making sure that the hotline is staffed fully and completely, also in getting the messages out to the communities that are of higher risk, right? So like I said, the amount maybe looked like it was small, but the actual amount that it would actually cost was much higher. So our conversations are the same, we're continuing those campaigns, just like we're also continuing it out through the whole Northeast Ohio region as well. You know, each one is targeted with their own, it's the same message, but targeted with their own hotline numbers to individual counties. So we're all working on an effort of that together.
So you're saying you don't have enough hotline staff?
Hotline staff, right? It's difficult to retain hotline staff. It's a very stressful job, right? We provided funding to frontline service also throughout the year to, so they could increase the amount of funds that they're paying, the salaries of the folks. They also having a hard time interviewing folks, people aren't applying for those jobs. They're moving on to other things, also if they've been there, right? You can get a higher salary at all these, or even the ice cream store, Mitchell's, was paying higher than what frontline was. But frontline is very active in trying to make sure that they have as many staff possible manning the hotline. Part of the funding for the diversion center was to, I think it was either three or five individuals just to handle, you know, to increase their capacity to have those calls. And they would, they'll hire somebody, and then the person will leave because it's too stressful. So then they hire somebody else, and then they're training.
So you're, how successful has it been through the chair, is the hotline staff in assisting bring those suicide attempts down? I mean, do you quantify that? Do you keep a record of that? How many suicide calls are in, and how many people you save, or...
Yes, our Assistant Chief Clinical Officer, she's in charge of all of our crisis services, and she receives monthly reports from frontline to go over all that data. And she's always in constant contact with them as well if there's any issues that come of that.
And one final question this round, Mr. Chair. Through the director, Director Asiki, what is the mission of the diversion center bids?
Right, so, so, okay, so that has changed, right? So it was originally established as a pre-arrest facility, right? So to keep individuals with mental illness or addiction out of incarceration, out of jail, because that's not a good place to have somebody treated. So just recently, and you know, we talked about this with the county executive, that they decided to open up the diversion center to police, EMS, and fire referrals from individuals who did not or were not involved in a crime. Because the police and our meetings with them have told us that they come across individuals who are exhibiting signs or symptoms of addiction or a mental illness, and they know them in their community, and they think that they would benefit from, from the services of the diversion center. Because now when we look at it, it's sort of, it's a diversion from jail in a crisis center now, is what we're talking about, right? So we want to divert individuals from hospitalization, we want to divert them from elevating their crisis, and we just want to make sure that they get the services that they need. So that just started on Monday.
I thought that, and to my understanding, that's a policy change that they're, with the EMS and fire to consider.
Yes, yes, and, yes, that changed as well. That they also can do that. And it would still work the same way with the fire, police, or ER, they would call the 623-688 number to have that brief screening first before they brought the individual to the diversion center.
So when you talk about divert from the hospital, what do you mean?
So a lot of times, people, when they're in a crisis or they're exhibiting signs and symptoms of mental illness, they're not taking their medication, they begin to spiral out of control, they don't even realize it, right? Because they felt good on their medication, they stop taking it, and now they're out in the community walking around, maybe talking to themselves or doing other things like that. So the sooner we could get the person help, then we don't have to send them to the state hospital or hospitalization, which was much more costly than getting them hooked up to services in the community or re-linked back to their services in the community.
Okay, so that's different than the step down from the state, from the hospitals? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Baker, followed by Shran, and followed by the council president.
Go right ahead.
If you don't mind, just to follow up to that point, if I could.
Please proceed.
I appreciate it. Just for clarity, as Councilwoman Conwell was saying, to me, it sounds like if you're in the hospital, and then you go to the diversion center, seems like, my thought process was, someone's in the community, as you said, they have those dynamics going on, they go to a diversion center, and from there to a hospital potentially. Am I wrong in that thinking? The idea of going from hospital back to diversion center sounds counterintuitive to me. How does that work?
Yeah, so a person who's in the hospital wouldn't be sent to the diversion center. I would say, so that's the first thing. If a person who's exhibiting those signs and symptoms, like we're saying, get to the diversion center, the diversion center does a complete assessment on that individual. And they could, it's sort of like a triage then, right? So we have St. Vincent psychiatric emergency room, right? So let's say the diversion center just said, this is something we can't handle here, they need to be more stabilized in a hospital environment, they would send them over to the St. Vincent ER. Also, there could be other things. We have a crisis stabilization unit. So maybe they would say, once they were stabilized even at the diversion center, we'll refer you to the crisis stabilization unit so you could get more acclimated, right, to your meds, and people will be able to watch you there, right? So the whole part of the diversion is keeping people away from going to the hospital and keeping them away from going to jail, and keeping them away from further spiraling into a bigger crisis that would require the hospitalization.
Ms. Baker.
Thank you. And my questions were very similar to Councilwoman Conwell, and also as heard by the president. But the, I guess the question that I would just kind of wrap up with is the theory of the diversion center and why it was created to begin with is to try to reduce the jail population. And now it seems that we are having some difficulty with the communication between the officers and the judicial system, and getting those that are in need perhaps of the diversion center not working like we thought it would. So we are now going to Plan B and opening it up to anyone that the police or EMS or fire would think is a good candidate. So I don't know if this is the right question for you, but it seems that perhaps the original theory of trying to reduce the jail population by offering this service, are we giving up then on the judicial piece that we can't seem to get through that wall that stops us from giving the services to those that are in need?
Yes, absolutely not, right? So when you're talking about actually the city of Cleveland, all of the other suburban departments, they're utilizing the diversion center. As of today, there were 81 individuals... As of today, there were 81 individuals have been brought through the diversion center, right? The city of Cleveland is still bringing the most individuals, I think maybe they're like 10, I think. And then it's followed, don't quote me exactly on that number, but around that time, around that amount. And the next is RTA. RTA is the next law enforcement that's using it. So, you know, right, and then Cleveland, they just issued their official policy for use. And advocates and the Adams Board and County Executive's Office don't necessarily believe in the process that they want to take, right? So they want to take that the police officers also have to call the city prosecutor to see if it was okay to bring an individual. And also, something else that was surprising in that policy was it said that any victims would have to also authorize or approve the person going to the diversion center rather than going to jail. Now, first of all, remember, what we were talking about is low-level, nonviolent offenses. So when we're talking about a victim, if there's a victim where somebody was harmed or anything like that, the person wouldn't be eligible to go to the diversion center anyway, right? And then also, let's say it was, somebody broke into your car, right? The police are still making a police report on that. So the individual could still get the police report for their insurance that they would fall through. So that process doesn't make sense, and none of the advocates believe that. And there's no way that any diversion center throughout the country works like that. And the other diversion centers throughout the country also open it up to other individuals as well. And I'm sorry, there was an interesting article in the New York Times, I think, and I can send it to you if you want to see it. But it was like that New York spent like $100 million on a diversion center three years ago, and they're not even using it yet. And they've also developed smaller ones, and I think there were only like 43 people that had been brought to the diversion center. So it also kind of points out to, right, the diversion center is a new thing, right, in our community. It's only been open since May. And when you think about all the police departments that we have in Cuyahoga County, right? And this is something new for them, right? And this is also a tool for the police, too, but it takes time for things to catch on. So I don't think we're giving up at all. And also, the County Executive's Office had made it very clear that our number-one priority is still servicing people who were involved in a low-level offense.
A low-level offense that...
Nonviolent.
Nonviolent, and at the time of either making that decision, or jail, or diversion center, our concentration is still there, are you saying?
Yes, and we meet...
Because I would rather have information come, and maybe I missed it in a committee meeting. But I had heard that the reason why we had to open it up to others that the police and EMS and fire are recommending is because there is such a low use of the diversion center because of that policy that was put in place by the city of Cleveland. Is that true, or is it just because it's a new, and we just weren't, there just weren't enough low-level offenders that were in need?
So two things there, right? So the city of Cleveland is the biggest municipality, right? They have the biggest population, right? They have downtown, right? So it would make sense that the city of Cleveland would interact with people who would be more likely to be eligible for the diversion center, right? Second one right out of my head, oh, right, so the board, we meet with the law enforcement every month, right? And they have told us that they're not running across people who have a mental illness or addiction who have been involved in a low-level offense. So therefore, that was a stipulation on there. And that's how they told us, if we could open it up, the law enforcement, right, and the Executive's Office, if we could open up to people, right? So we're diverting other issues by opening up to others as well.
So just, I understand. So the theory that was there at the beginning with the diversion center and the need for it was to capture those that could use services that you provide, Rihanna House can provide.
Yes.
Turned out to be perhaps not what it played out to be, that there aren't as many that we thought could use it through low-level offenses. Is that what I'm hearing, and so we decided to open it up to others?
Yes, that's part of it, as well as the city of Cleveland didn't fully have a policy to utilize the diversion center. So we're looking at different things there that are kind of coming together, yeah.
Taking out of time, thank you. Appreciate your answers.
That's true. And it wasn't the city of Cleveland who said they were not running into people who have committed a low-level offense. Those came from the suburban departments for us, but they're utilizing it as well.
This is, this is a topic that I am passionate about and concerned about at an extremely high level. But I just want to remind my colleagues that these are the budget hearings. And this is, this is a policy discussion that we could debate all day. But we have to deal with the budget. And particularly, when we get to Monday, when we have something like 11 different departments on the agenda, we're just not going to get through it if we do it in this fashion. Councilman Shran is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think you indicated that targeted areas with the opiate were, targeted, I mean, I think that's where you're spending advertising dollars? Is that what targeted means?
Yes.
Okay, and if you had targeted areas, that there would be an improvement and less deaths? Is that what I think I heard you say?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Less deaths?
Less, yes. No, we're targeting areas that had the most number of overdoses or deaths.
Okay, and so what you did was an effective way of identifying that? That it did some good to reduce the deaths?
Yes, that's what we're hoping, right? Because if we know that people are calling the hotline number for help, and if we know that people are using the fentanyl test strips, right? So we could assume that there would have been more deaths if we didn't have those things out in the community.
And how long you been doing this program now?
Opiate, it's just about a year, I think we've been doing that.
Okay, so we have enough, we have 12 months with the data. What were the deaths before, and how much, what the percentage is, is a result of your one-year's worth of activity?
I don't have that before me, but we could certainly go back and look at that, and I can get that for you.
Please make sure, because this is, as our colleague pointed out, this is a budget hearing. Numbers are important. And I'd like to see the numbers in regards to, when you make a statement, if I spend X dollars, then I got X result. Show us the X result.
Okay, sure.
Thank you. We've been, and I know that this is a problem that's been going on for years now with the opiate problem. And we keep using treatment as the solution, or this kind of method. One of the suggestions the county executive has had, and I tend to agree, that isn't it time for us to try to find actual business solutions that might help as opposed to the treatment? If we could actually solve it on the front end, the treatment piece would be mitigated out there. To find actual businesses that are, could actually address the problem. Not treatment, but the actual drug, how we identify it, how we get rid of drugs, how we monitor it. I know that people at Nottingham Spurk and people like that have startup businesses that want to create solutions, not treatments. You understand the difference between what I'm talking about here?
Yes, I hear, but I do not know of anything that was brought to the county executive.
Oh, okay, that's the point. The county executive wants to bring it forward, separate from what you're doing. Instead of chasing dollars for treatment, let's say, let's put aside some of our opiate dollars to actually create businesses that would actually go out and try to solve this on the front end before we get to your portion of the treatment. Would you think that that may be a better, or not a better, but an alternative way to actually try to address the opiate problem, to actually try to find solutions on the front end as opposed to treatment on the back end?
I wouldn't say it was an alternative. I would certainly say it was a complement. Because we know that people who are suffering from severe mental illness, or who also start using drugs, that there's some sort of trauma in their life, right? So that's trauma-informed care. So you can't have one without the other. You can't have, I guess, I don't know exactly what was proposed.
The point is, you don't know that there's a business solution that could be created. So would it make sense to at least explore that? Because we've been exploring this for years and years and years, and you keep saying that it's not getting really any better.
That's also nationally, right? It's also nationally, not just in Cuyahoga County.
I agree, yeah. We are known because all of the lawsuits were brought before Judge Polster's court. So we have become known as the opiate capital for the dollars.
Okay, yes.
Wouldn't it be phenomenal if we were the opiate solution?
Yes, that would be fantastic. I would agree with you 100%.
So if we bring forth a proposal that actually talks about that, where you bring some of the best and brightest, there were solutions for all kinds of other things that have been developed. And we've got probably one of the most inventive organizations in the world through people like Nottingham Spurk and some of the other inventive things going on, that I think that we could be that opiate solution capital. And if you would be supportive of that idea, I know that the county executive is ready to launch that idea as a piece of the opiate funds. I know, or at least I have reason to believe that Judge Polster would also be supportive of that. And I hope that this council would look at this as a different way than just throwing dollars at treatment. And I think that not the treatment is not important. I don't, I'm not trying to demean that. But instead of being a single solution, that we would actually look at it from a different solution. And wouldn't it be phenomenal if we were known as the Silicon Valley for solutions around the opiate world problem? Because I'm sure you're well aware, every opiate, every pill has its own signature on it. Every signature on that identifies how that every one of those pills could be traced through the system. And we could actually start to try to reduce that out there. And there's a whole, I have explored it with a number of businesses that have actually done ways to actually reduce the amount of capacity out there. And some of these are going to be economic solutions. And why not have them be housed here in Northeast Ohio, create these businesses that would actually solve, or at least be on the front end of the solution problem? Thank you. I appreciate that support. You indicated your reserves are around $52 million, is that what I heard?
$51 million.
$51 million, okay. And your budget is $43 million?
Our total budget is $83 million.
Okay, so $83, $83.50. So that means that your reserves are well more than 50% of your budget.
For the yearly budget, yes.
Yeah, our county budget is only, our county created a reserve fund of 25% for the entire county. So yours is more than two and a half, not quite that, but well more than 200% larger, your reserves for your budget, than what we have as a council have decided for the entire county out there. So why would we not ask you to use your reserves to fund it as opposed to tapping into the county for additional proceeds?
This is the first time that we've had this amount of reserves. Because like I said, it was through our creative monitoring, but not just giving a set amount to a provider for services, and then they would use it for something else. So we switched to a pooled funding, right? So we put aside money in a pool, and they fund that down. So that allowed us to have, allowed us to create more of a reserve. Also, the providers sometimes are not billing for the services. Or whether they're not providing the services or billing for the services, they're not drawing down on the allocations that they do have, right? So that's why we're looking at a reserve, and like I said, Councilwoman Conwell, from other things that we'll be thinking about using that for. Like once again, that we have to have another building for the relocation. So I don't know how many millions that's going to be, but I'm sure it's going to be expensive, right? Also, there are other programs, or even like you're saying about these front-end things. First of all, I would like to say, I think it'd be great if the Adams Board was involved in those discussions, and maybe not just the county.
Theoretically possible, yes, absolutely.
Right, so maybe we could use some of that funding as well for that, right? If we look at it, and our board agrees to that. So we know that we have a healthy reserve. This is the first time that we've had a healthy reserve in a long time. When I first started, we had no reserves at all. And that was something that our board felt that we should have reserves to make sure that we'll be able to address any other crisis that will come forward. So we could certainly, like I said, we'll entertain other projects or other things. But we also want to make sure that we're putting money in things that work as well.
When you say healthy reserves, you're running it close to, as I can do a quick back-of-the-envelope, 60% of your budget, and the county is working at 25%. And so that's way beyond healthy in my definition. Congratulations on good business practices. Congratulations on your monitoring. Congratulations on doing those things that you're doing to generate a 60% of your operating budget reserves. But I also think that that's why you do things, to do good business practices, to generate those reserves, is to come back and say, hey, we're going to use $1 million of this to go out and train our workforce out there.
Right, well, even like we sent out the RFPs, right? And 260 RFPs that we received, and we're funding 203. That we're giving direct contracts, I think it's over $60 million in direct contracts. And that's $5 million more than we did last year. So we're looking at new programs, and we're looking at where the dollars are going to be spent. But this is, like I said, this is the first time we've had that amount of money. And we definitely, and I know, I have a board member here with me, Sharon, and she asked that same question last night, right? About the reserves.
Great question, then.
Yeah.
Congratulations. That's what good business practices are all about. I mean, there is, everybody says government and business are different. They really are. There's a lot of similarities. You did good business practices, you generated 60% reserves.
I agree with you.
Please use them, as opposed to coming and using our 25% reserves out of the county.
Yes, I could tell you, yes, we are definitely going to be looking at that. But we want to make sure that we're spending it on good things.
I think that workforce training is a good thing, so go ahead and spend, I would encourage you to spend some of your 60%.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Councilman Tuma.
Thank you, thank you, through the chair. Mr. Osiki, as far as the funding for opioids and such, have you had any discussions with the county medical examiner regarding the issue? Because he's come in a few times to speak in front of council, and he's been very education, you know, provided a good education on that, on that topic. And one of the concerns, you know, we should all have here as stewards of the public's funding is avoiding duplication of services, but, you know, still using those resources in a most efficient way. And one of the things he discussed when he's come before the council is, you know, there's the expensive treatment of addiction, which I know you're very familiar with. And then there's the prevention. And, you know, we have, as a council, taken the initiative to go through the education process through some of our schools. A couple of years back, I think there was a grant, I think it was a $40,000, which is pretty minimal in the big grand scheme of things, that went through one of my, in my district, in the Palmer School District, and it was a very successful program. You know, hitting these kids when they're young, and, you know, in a very non-threatening manner. You know, kind of hitchhiking off on what Councilman Shran said, and Mr. Sweeney, he's new, it's only been a couple of months. Hitchhiking on what both those gentlemen said, you know, it's just imperative to make sure that we're targeting the right, you know, audience. And I don't think you can ever have too much advertising. And I know you were talking about hitting different communities. When you say communities, what in fact do you mean by that? Do you mean municipalities? Do you mean areas of neighborhoods? Or do you mean areas that are of concern in the county, you know? What exactly do you mean by that?
All of that, all of exactly what you said.
All of that.
Because like our staff is on that death review board, they're looking at, they're seeing where the things are. And we're looking at those numbers to see where are we going to target.
Okay, because again, I don't think, you know, this is a problem that's, it's just not going away. And as Mr. Shran said, you know, we finally do have the sufficient funds for it. So we really got to attack this issue. And it is a national crisis, but, you know, we're responsible for what's happening here in our neighborhoods and our communities. And I'd really like to see an increase in the advertisements, and also possibly in educating with some of the school districts, working in conjunction with the districts. I find that they've been very open to seeking help. And it's not just districts that have problems, it's districts that don't have problems, so we can avoid future problems. You know, it's really about educating the kids when they're young. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the time.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond, we have services in every school in the Cleveland School District, right? Mental health services and addiction services. We're also in various schools throughout Cuyahoga County in various suburbs. I could tell you that in prevention activities, in prevention, we've reached 32,975 individuals through our prevention programs. So we're reaching several people. The hotline, we had over 91,000 calls to the hotline. These are 2020 numbers. I don't have all the 2021s because of the way we do our annual reports. So, you know, 18,000 individuals have been involved in crisis services and intervention services, recovery supports. Then, so we are reaching, you know, a lot of people when you look at this. And trying to look at another one, there was justice-related services, over 1,600 people that we've served with that. And these are, remember, these are the services that aren't covered by Medicaid, right? So that's where we're spending the bulk of our funding on. And faith-based, I know somebody mentioned faith-based before. So our faith-based initiatives, around 640 people. We have maybe seven or eight programs that we do with faith-based. So we are trying, we are reaching out to as many folks as we can. But I will gladly take the message back to our external affairs staff. They will be delighted about the idea. staff. They will be delighted about the idea of spending more and doing more advertising and reaching as many people as we can.
All right, I appreciate your comments. Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
One final question.
One very brief final question.
And he should have a quick answer.
Okay.
Chair to the Director, if you, if you require a new building and utilize the reserve fund to purchase it, with the proceeds from your current building, will you, is your plan to replenish your reserve funds?
No, we would put it back into services, is what we would do. Or we would even buy another location. Or if that location wasn't suitable for the treatment services, we could also make it into independent housing as well. So we may or may not sell that building. It all depends when we're going through and figuring what would be the best thing to do. But it wouldn't go back to replenish the reserves. And quite frankly, I don't think the building would be more than $200,000. I shouldn't say that out loud, right? But they don't know where it is. So, but yeah, it's not a very expensive building.
Just wanted to know what your plans were with that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. You didn't get off easy today.
No.
Thank, thank you very much for coming in, and we appreciate all the work that you do that's very important for our community.
Yes, I thank everybody for their comment, and their support, too.
Okay. And next on our agenda, appearing at the budget hearings for the first time is our new Director of the Office of Homeless Services, Melissa Surack. Welcome to the committee.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for that wonderful introduction. Melissa Surack, Director of the Office of Homeless Services. The Cuyahoga County Office of Homeless Services is the designated lead agency for the homeless continuum of care and the homeless management information system. As the COC lead agency, OHS is responsible for the coordination, convening, and planning for the homeless system. As the HMIS lead, we are responsible for providing the HMIS system administrator for the system, which serves as the technical point of contact for training, support, and reporting. Our office serves as the backbone of the COC, which includes over 40 agencies and over 200 programs. The Office of Homeless Services is responsible for the procurement, contracting, monitoring, and service delivery of over $40 million and other federal resources. OHS's biannual budget is essentially the same as the 2021 levels of expenditures. Revenue is reflected solely as HHS levy, which translates directly into contracts and professional services. The current budget assumes a staffing level of five FTEs, four programmatic, one HMIS administrator, and one fiscal office. No programs or services were projected to be reduced or eliminated from the 2021 to the 2022 budget. And no additional projects, project funds were requested for this budget period. There are three top areas for levy support. HHS levy funds provide a basic safety net for our homeless community. There are three priority areas of the continuum that are supported by levy funding, including emergency shelter, overflow shelter for singles, adults, families, and young adults, and supportive services. The levy funds are leveraged with other federal and state and private foundation funds to meet the community needs. Dollars to provide rental assistance to help households leave shelter quickly are awarded to Cuyahoga County through the Department of Housing and Urban Development Continuum of Care Competitive Grant Process. These funds use primarily, are used primarily on housing projects. I stand before you today, not only as a new director, but a new director that started under unprecedented times. And even during these unpredictable times, I have a vision for how our continuum can continue to elevate our service to the community. My office will continue leading the continuum in the overarching goal of moving households from a housing crisis to permanent housing as quickly as possible. It is my intention to strengthen our collaboration with colleagues from Cuyahoga County Department of Development, City of Cleveland Community Development, and local philanthropy, to not only leverage resources, but to strategically align those resources effectively and efficiently to meet the needs of the homeless community. The following initiatives of the upcoming year will be addressed, brading resources from levy, HUD Continuum of Care, and local and state funding. First, our homeless COC strategic plan, which has never existed. We work to, we seek to work with consultants for the assessment and analysis of budget, community resources, and its application to community need. Dedicated case management and workforce development. We work to lift up the housing-first belief that we have, that believes that every person is possible of having housing, and if provided the appropriate supports, can maintain housing. We seek to extend that and elevate that and work on employment. So we not only have sustainable housing, but people that are stably employed. COC specialized services for subpopulations. We seek to provide equitable services across our continuum. This work will empower us to look at current policies and procedures, procurement processes, and ensure that we provide meaningful access points for households entering our shelter, and appropriate and safe shelter and housing options. Lastly, we look for the revitalization of our current shelter model through the creation of non-congregate shelter. Lastly, I'd like to say that I'm extremely grateful for the foundation that was created for my predecessor. I'm grateful for the strong and resilient continuum of care that exists in our community, and probably most grateful for the brilliant and strongly committed staff that I work beside every single day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a very important area of service. We appreciate all the work that you do, and I'm open to questions from my colleagues. Okay, well, I have a question.
Sure.
And my, my question is, is what your vision is about non-congregate shelter? What, what would, in the ideal world, what would, what would an individual person's space look like? Are we thinking about going to something more like a motel-like setting with individual rooms, or, or more spaced out, common areas? What do you have in mind, and, and what additional funding would be required to achieve your long-term goals in this area?
Councilwoman Miller, I believe at the end of the day, as we work for both congregate shelters for single males and single females, it'll be a combination of both. We're currently looking at plans that are completely individualized, where there are walls, there's individual restrooms that are provided for, for each shelter resident as well, but there's also semi, semi non-congregate that we're looking at as well, where some will be individualized, and some will, will just be better spaced and more individualized. So I think, based on brading the funding, there are requirements with funding, to answer the last point of your question, we'll look to make a request, hopefully, to have some of the dollars from ARPA to support, as well as working with our colleagues at the county and the city of Cleveland on the home dollars that are forthcoming in order to make all of that happen.
Anything else? You got off easy today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The two years have been rough. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next, we have the Office of Early Childhood Invest in Children Director, Rebecca Dorman, a distinguished veteran at the budget hearings.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. Good afternoon. I am Rebecca Dorman, Director of Invest in Children in the County Office of Early Childhood. Thank you for this opportunity to come before council today, and for your support of the work we do. I'll begin with just a quick review of our mission. The mission of Invest in Children is to mobilize resources and research to ensure the well-being of all young children in Cuyahoga County. We provide a continuum of targeted services prenatal to kindergarten for children and their families, build awareness, advocate, and measure our impact. We aim to achieve equity and access to services, and eliminate racial, ethnic disparities in child and family outcomes. With your support and investment, we are extremely proud of the outcomes we've achieved for children and families in Cuyahoga County. For this brief budget presentation, I'll focus on two topics only: our staffing and significant positive changes in our programming in the coming budget cycle, which also include a change in our funding approach to both enhance and expand our early childhood system. So first, to our staffing, as you can see in the organizational chart that's provided, we have a staff of nine, I'm going to say a brilliant staff of nine after hearing my predecessor, which I concur with, with three positions currently vacant. We are currently moving forward to fill all of these positions through shared services. We also have a fiscal specialist assigned to our office. Now I'm pleased to tell you about some exciting programming and funding changes that we're planning within our home visiting programs and our early childhood mental health program. The Parents vs. Teachers Program, an evidence-based home visiting program we have funded for the past eight years, has been administered by Bright Beginnings and implemented via subcontracts with community agencies. The state has recently made additional funding available for home visiting, and specifically for PAT. Thus, Invest in Children, in collaboration with Bright Beginnings, has determined that Invest in Children will no longer fund PAT, and instead put our dollars into expanding our program offerings. What does this mean exactly? The agencies which have been receiving Invest in Children funding to deliver, Parents vs. Teachers, will receive direct funding from the state. In addition, Bright Beginnings itself has decided to become a home visiting provider, and will also be funded via state contract. We anticipate that service capacity will increase by about 150 families per year with this new arrangement, all funded by the state of Ohio. Therefore, this allows us to strategically repurpose the million dollars that we had been using to fund PAT annually. We plan to use those funds to enhance and expand parent support programs, our newborn home visit program, and our early childhood mental health program. I'll describe each in more detail. While Invest in Children has very robust family support services in Cuyahoga County, we still see ways to offer families more choices and services, and to widen our impact. Bright Beginnings will receive $609,000 in 2022 and $748,000 in 2023 to expand and enhance our continuum of family support services. This includes an expansion of Parents Connect, our curated Facebook group for parents, which has been extremely successful, a program to support parents of children ages three to five years old who have elevated blood lead levels, and the creation of Triple P, a group format evidence-based program that will be available both in-person and virtually. In terms of numbers served, Bright Beginnings estimates an increase to 1,000 families served via Parents Connect with this expansion from about 400 currently, 300 families served over two years with the new lead support program, and 650 families served over the two years with the creation of the Triple P groups. Welcome Home, our newborn home visit program, provides a one-time visit from a Cuyahoga County Board of Health Public Health nurse to families who, during the perinatal period, are on Medicaid or have other high-risk conditions such as domestic violence. The program currently recruits new parents from Metro and UH, and serves about 1,300 to 1,500 families in a typical year pre-pandemic. We plan to increase the number of families who get a newborn home visit by about 875 families by adding $250,000 per year to the contract to support extension to the, expansion to the two other major birthing hospitals with significant numbers of mothers on Medicaid, Fairview and Hillcrest. And then we plan to increase funding by $150,000 for the early childhood mental health program that is administered by the Adams Board, increasing funding from $670,000 a year to $820,000. Agencies are selected via an RFP process, which actually is going on right now and closes tomorrow, which is managed by the Adams Board. And with increased funding, we expect to be able to fund a larger number of agencies to meet the significant community needs for these services. We estimate that an additional 150 children will receive services. In addition, via the RFP, we will identify several agencies to employ emergency response positions. These are fully funded positions to handle emergent trauma cases so that they are not stuck on a waiting list, which has been a challenge in the past. Every day is precious in the life of a young child who has experienced trauma. I also want to mention that in collaboration with the Adams Board, we're seeking foundation funding for child-parent psychotherapy training. CPP is the preferred treatment for young children who've experienced trauma, and is the preferred mode of treatment for children served by our county's new Safe Babies Corps team, which we want to support in their work with children in the child welfare system. This training would be available to the contracted ECMH agency staff, as well as to independent therapists in the community, with priority given to therapists of color. We're very pleased with the expansion of Invest in Children service continuum, both in terms of the types of programs offered, as well as the number of families to be served. Our universal pre-K program, other childcare-related programs, Spark Home Visiting, as well as the Child Fatality Review Contracts have no significant programmatic or funding changes, and will continue as before. So that concludes my presentation. At this time, I'm prepared to take your questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Questions by my colleagues. So I'll start the questions, and I have a big one. It's if, if the President's Build Back Better Program passes and includes the provisions that are described as, as universal early childhood education, what impacts do you think that would have on what we're doing here?
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. Well, we can dream. I think there is a cost-sharing aspect to the universal pre-K proposal of the President. But something that I would love to do, if we were able to have additional funding, and again, repurpose some of the dollars that we have, you could truly become universal, as we've talked about before, which we think would take us from up to maybe 15,000 to 17,000 children in the county, from, we're a little before, between 4,000 and 5,000 now, depending on how enrollment goes. So that would be one way to do it. Another, another concern of ours is infant and toddler care, which is actually more expensive than preschool, which is in short supply and high quality. And so to be able to help families afford infant care and increase the amount of, the number of slots, as well as toddler care, would be a dream that we could entertain.
Other questions by my colleagues?
Councilman.
Council President Jones.
Thank you. One question, MyCom, is that under your department, or what's not?
Nope, that would, yeah, we stop at kindergarten, and MyCom is beyond kindergarten. That would be more related to Family and Children First Council Age Group.
That's coming up soon.
K-2.
Yeah. We're, so we're prenatal to kindergarten, and then we hand off to FCFC, and they handle the rest of the youth continuum. Yeah.
First to 12th.
My colleague, Robin, et cetera.
First to 12th grade.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Conwell.
Chair to Director, you talked about the million that you would be saving from the PAT.
Mm-hmm.
Just as history shows that we've, we've paid, great years are pretty substantial. I'm just worried, or a little concerned about now that, glad that the state is taking over, but I'm just, just concerned, concerned, but wondering your thought process, now that you've switched those funding sources to other things, which you probably need. If the state should change its mind in four years, face back to this again, have you thought about that?
Well, I, I mean, we create, Councilwoman, we've created, we created PAT actually in its current format originally because of many state changes and cutbacks. And we responded to those by creating a program because we felt the state, when the, in roughly 2010, 2011, when the economic downturn happened, they cut many programs and really cut back home visiting. That's actually when we created our version of the newborn home visit program with local funding, as well as this version of PAT and eligibility. So we're used to responding to changes from the state. And obviously, we hope to keep increasing the service continuum, but when we need to, we just punt and we readjust, because, and we have to prioritize. And that's what we would do under those circumstances. and we have to prioritize, and that's what we would do under those circumstances. We're very lucky that Governor DeWine has been a very strong supporter of, in particular, home visiting, and we're taking advantage of that now. Yeah, thanks.
Ms. Baker.
Yes, just a question on the universal pre-K program. It used to be funded through the county but also through private donations. It has now 100%, isn't it, or near 100% funded through the HHS levy?
Councilwoman Baker, thank you for the question. We still are utilizing private dollars as needed at about, between 800,000 to $1 million because the cost of the program fluctuates with the children who come in due to our scholarship eligibility, which we estimate the best that we can, and sometimes we're right on and the providers are on. It's right now, things are, you know, it's always hard to know exactly. So we still do have some private dollars to supplement as needed, which is very helpful.
The majority of dollars, though, do come from the HHS levy.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
A reason why with the success of the program that we would expand from 4,000 to 5,000 students to, I'm sorry, 40, 4,000 to 5,000, what did you say?
I said, we're between 4,000 and 5,000 slots this year, yeah, just trying to get enrollment up, yeah.
So why wouldn't that be expanded to a greater role, given the universal pre-K is a more dedicated source, to be able to pick up more than 5,000 children?
Okay, so the history was, we were at 2,000 children when Executive Buttes came into office. He, you know, spearheaded the notion of an expansion with putting aside the $10 million public dollars and then the raising of an additional $12 million private dollars, which we are at the tail end of spending. That allowed us to double the size of the program, and then with the passage of the increased levy rate, we were able to then have less reliance on private dollars, maintain, actually, the 4,000 go a little beyond it. So that's where we are now. It's just, it's a matter of, I mean, right now is obviously a challenging time for the childcare system, but of course, if more dollars were available, we could continue to expand the program and the scholarship eligibility for families.
If I may, with the original intent of it, and there seemed to be a lot of enthusiasm at the beginning to donate towards this cause, knowing that trying to help youngsters begin their school year, that seemed to drop off quite a bit, which was why it was put into the HHS levy. But is there still a strong momentum to try and increase those number of children? Are we still going out, other than the small, I should, million dollars, up to a million dollars you may be receiving and extra funding, why isn't it that we're not going with the more outside private dollars like we did at the beginning to even get that number up higher?
So my understanding, when private, the private sources were approached, which were individuals, foundations, and corporations, they were told this would be a one-time request. And so, they provided us with those dollars with the caveat that then the county would seek permanent ongoing public funding, which is in fact what happened. That was in our strategic plan, and that's why it was included as an item to be funded when the levy was increased, and we were delighted. So that additional 5 million came in. So we felt like we had fulfilled our promise to those private funders.
Yeah, I didn't realize that that was a one-time and that the Health and Human Services levy was always going to be the end-all. I honestly didn't know that, so thank you for that.
Yeah, no.
I thought it was always going to be private, but we couldn't reach those goals, and so we turned to the HHS levy because it was a more consistent source, but that's not really how that played out.
Right. I think the notion is that the private dollars allowed us to get to this larger expansion, and then we would find, I mean, we looked at other ways. We looked at federal and state sources as well, of course, and those just did not pan out. And the executive was very enthusiastic about looking for other sources other than the levy, which we did, and, I mean, the environment, the funding environment at the state and federal level was not one that allowed us to access those dollars, so came back to the levy again.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I actually think that the early childhood program is one of the least controversial of the items in the federal proposal, and that if we get any, any federal proposal passed, that something's going to be included for that. So I think that that might provide us a route for the next level of expansion.
Oh, wow. Okay, I'm glad, I hope to share your, I'll try to share your optimism on that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
And we are now going to take a short break before the Family and Children First Council and the Office of Reentry, and we will start promptly at 10 minutes before the hour.
Kevin and I aren't on the same page. Bill and I are good. Mike and I are good. All lots is going through.
Yeah.
Mine is multiple, multiple chip. Killed me when I ran for senate. I sure was. Normal, normal hatred. As much as that shit went in. I mean, I like this game.
Committee of the Hall will please come back to order.
Jack's out there, Mike's out there.
You got a quorum in the room.
Yvonne's out there. Please out there. We have judicial.
We have a form, we have a form in the room.
We do.
Just call the first person.
My, my colleagues that are in the back of the room, could you please come forward and take your seats at the table?
Hit that gavel, Dale. Hit it good.
Councilman Schron, please, to the table.
I don't know. Ultimate, Sean, line one, line one. A G and Councilman Schron.
Next, we have on our agenda another very important agency, the, the Family and Children First Council. And I would like to call forward Director Merriman to make an introduction.
Good afternoon, County Council. David Merriman, Director of Health and Human Services. I'm here today on behalf of Director Robin Martin. Robin Martin is doing well. She did unfortunately sustain an injury. She's not able to come here today physically. And so I am presenting today with her colleague, one of her employees, Kathy Sullivan. Robin prepared a presentation. I understand that it's been provided to you, but I'm going to ask Kathy to introduce the presentation and then Kathy and I will be available to answer questions. Kathy, if you would, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathleen Johnson, the Associate Director for Family Children First Council, representing Robin Martin. Family Children First Council is a policy and planning entity for children and families in Cogga County. We are responsible for service coordination and child well-being for children kindergarten to graduation. For 2022, our budget is flat. The FCFC contract budget is divided into two areas, service coordination and child well-being slash youth development. The state funds cover 52% of our service coordination component. The remaining 48% is covered by local funds. Local funds cover administration, the data system, and a safety net for families that do not meet the criteria for the state funds. The child well-being, youth development services are 100% levy funded. The fund supports out-of-school time and transitions, youth leadership and engagement, parent and family engagement, and closing the achievement gap. FCFC did not experience any significant budget reductions or eliminations, and we have not added any new local initiatives or increased expenditures to our upcoming budget. FCFC does not have any issues or concerns with our 2022 to 2023 recommended budget. Our major initiative for 2022 and 2023 will be to work with the State of Ohio to modernize service coordination, launch Ohio Rise, and working with local child-suffering public systems to prevent custody relinquishment for families where there is no abuse or neglect. We hope to see additional increases to our state revenue. We are open for questions from County Council.
Thank you very much, Ms. Conwell. You're first out of the gate.
Thank you. I don't have that many. Scott, what is the name of the program that they, Scott? Yeah, what, what, what is the name of the program that they fund Parma with? I heard it was a success. And my question to Kathy would be, or Ms. Johnson would be, it was a great success in Parma. How do we expand that? I thought it was some conversations that we were going to expand that program. So Scott, if you could tell us a little.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you. The name escapes me at the moment, but I could find out for you. But yeah, I don't want to give a fake name. But, but yeah, there were a couple programs put forth by the medical examiner who, and this is the one he recommended, because they already had, one of the things they had in place already was the documentation in the school district saved themselves a lot of money because they could copy the documents. It was in the public domain, the documents. And so all they had to do is really make copies and let the teachers learn how to do the program. The money actually went towards how, you know, teaching the teachers themselves how to do the program itself, but we could find that out for you. I want to say, I don't know if it was Joe or Trevor who helped out with that. I think it might have been Joe, Nani, with that information.
And I know I'd had a conversation with Robin pre, probably it was pre-pandemic, pre her, her injuries. We were gonna, they were talking about it was such a good program that we were going to actually try to expand it in other school.
Was it our FAS program, our Families Schools Together?
It was about the drugs, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, it was about the opioids.
Oh, the opioids, okay. Yeah, so that's opioid. So we just, we just started with our opioid program. And Belfair and Golden Cypher's is running those programs.
Okay, so you expanded to three. So it's a total of three of those programs now?
So we got money to do the opioid prevention and the education program. So we just got going. So some of the districts are changing, but I know we are in alignment with it. So Belfair is one of the providers and Golden Cypher's is the other provider.
I can, I'm sorry, if I can add, I believe the program that, that the councilman, this Councilman Tuma's referencing, there was another provider that was in the community. They did not apply for the RFP to my knowledge. I don't know why. But I, that, that is, you know, we RFP'd the services that we received through opioid funding, and we only went with providers that applied.
Okay, so the previous provider didn't reapply?
That's my understanding.
For that specific program in Parma?
Again, that is my understanding.
I just, not going to belabor this. I'll open it up for other people, other of my colleagues, but I would just like to talk with the director.
Ms. Baker.
Just curious, are the internships eliminated in your program now for 2022 and 2023?
So I'll start on this. I'll ask Kathy to chime in as well. So the, there, there hasn't been any eliminations. What I've talked to Robin Martin about is integrating in the FCFC workforce services with the Ohio Means Jobs CCMEP program. I'm going to use a little bit of acronyms here, so I'll slow it down a little bit. There is a state of Ohio effort that looks to bring together the Temporary Aid to Needy Families, or TANF, funding that generally comes to our community to help young people get exposed to jobs, provide summer employment, provides year-round employment and services. And then there was separate money that went to the Ohio Means Jobs Center to do the same. The prior executive director and I came to an understanding and we decided to merge those two programs and have a single RFP, a single process, and in essence have Ohio Means Jobs manage the entire process for both JFS, Job and Family Services, as well as the Ohio Mean Job Center. That program has gotten to quite a large scale between 10 and 12 million a year. And really with the, with the pandemic impact, we're not fully utilizing those resources. And so we've all decided we want to focus on that, that CCMEP program, that merged, combined program, as opposed to having a lot of one-offs. So I think Robin, Robin is continuing to support workforce. I think it's still in her budget, but the question remains, do, do we need one more program on that? Or do we need to continue to have all entities focus on the existing program?
Can you say how many in the history of your internships from 2019 to 2020, since last year, you were averaging about 30? So would you say that you're going to meet that and exceed it with the new programming that you're talking about?
So we averaged 136 over the last two years for the program. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm looking at your executives recommended biennial budget. And under the number of internships, it lists actuals of '27 and '19, and '28 and 2020, and '30 and 2021, and then zero and zero for '22 and '23. But I was just curious why that changed and.
Yeah, if, if I can say, I think much of what you're, you're seeing there comes out of some of the reporting that we have done to the, the Office of Innovation. Those may not be accurate. We'll come back, we'll get an updated accurate figure at how many residents were served. But I, I will say, there was definitely a decrease in services during the pandemic. Many, many opportunities to provide residents with workforce sort of disappeared as businesses closed. We had a lot less take-up of jobs. I would also say traditionally those, those internships pay at a lower rate. They pay around a minimum wage. One of the things we've seen is that residents can get a better job going out on their own. And I think we're recognizing that if, if we're going to offer someone a job that's going to be lower than they can get on their own, a wage lower than they can on their own, they'll probably end up taking it. And we need to kind of reconsider what sorts of offers we make.
If I just may follow. I guess I would consider an internship as not just being a job that pays more or less, but an actual teaching of a certain career. And whether it pays a little more or less, I'm not sure is as important as the learning that goes along with that. But if you could, I would like to know, you know, just based on what we're given, that's all we have to go by, is the, on the budget book, the Family and Children First Council reads as the internships, around 30 each year, and then drops off completely for the next two years. And if that's replaced by the program that you expressed, then, you know, how will that, but what does that look like for future targeted children?
Yeah, so it's still going to be the 30 per year when they merge with the CCMEP.
Yes, it has been around 30, 30 per year. So that, that figure is accurate. Robin texted me, she's obviously watching. And, and Kathy's right, we're going to, we're going to merge. We'll continue to provide support. Right now, CCMEP, it's not resources they need. They need youth to take the jobs, and that's really what we're focusing on. And you are right, it's not just a job, it's the right job, it's the right exposure. And that's where placing it in Ohio Means Jobs that focuses on demand-driven jobs or in-demand jobs is, is the right partnership.
Other questions?
Yes. Councilman?
So I would like to ask a question about the budget book. The, the budget for 2022 and 2023 is about $800,000 less than the budget for 2021. And my question is, is why that is and whether it reflects any reduction in, in program services or staffing?
No, that is not a reduction in services. What they did, because of the funding that we get from the state, they pulled that out into a state funding so that it rolls over. So that's for our MSY dollars and for our FCSS dollars. So it says, it's the grant funding. So that's, they pulled it over to a separate account so that when, when I invoice for them, we don't have to worry about it being pulled over into the actual county funding. So it's, it's still there and a part of our budget. They just pulled it out and it's, it's held separately over in the, the grant funding. That you agree.
Thank you. Other questions?
Councilman?
Council President Jones.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave, Kathy. Question, the Closing the Achievement Gap Initiative. How much of the budget, what is the dollar amounts for Closing the Achievement Gap?
So it's $1,125,000.
Is that per year?
Per year.
Per year, yes, sir.
Thank you. And next, in your indicators, key performance measures, the high school graduation rate. When it says 82% and 83% is targets for the coming years and 81% for this year, is that in, what is that a percentage of? The kids that you serve within the high schools? Or how do I understand that graduation rate?
So it says that that's the target graduation rate for the high schools that are participating in the, in the programs.
To my knowledge, those are the individuals that are participating in the program. They're not for the high schools in general.
Okay, it's like CTAG and the other programming that FCFC oversees?
Yes.
The number of enrolled in the wraparound program, the 245, 254 for the previous actuals of 20, and then, and I see 2, 240. Again, are those, trying to understand if that's the high school age or first grade through?
That's for our service coordination, part of our office, and for our FCSS.
Okay.
Those, those are not related to CTAG?
They are not. Okay, thank you, thank you. All right. Next on CTAG, we, we had an evaluation through Case Western Reserve a few years ago. In fact, how long we've been around? Seven years, it started about eight years ago, but it's been in place seven years. So in those earlier years, after the third year, actually, we had the evaluation, Case Western Reserve, they did it, it was outside of the county, again, Case Western. But this last budget cycle, we looked to do it in-house. Where are we with that? I have not seen any, any. I have not seen any, any evaluations.
So, Councilman, to, to your, I'm sorry, to the Councilman through the chair, yes, there, there was a plan under the prior director to try to bring that evaluation in-house. You know, as, as we, we tried to create the evaluation plan, we actually felt that there wasn't the ability to have, have our Performance Evaluation and Innovation Group do the amount of research necessary and the amount of data collection that was initially proposed. So we did not move forward with that internal evaluation. What we're talking about now is moving forward using a new data system that, or using a data system in a new way that will allow us to gather additional information, and that the FCFC team will, will do the evaluation. I'm not sure Kathy, if you can speak to is, is Case Western Reserve or anybody else helping us out with the, with the new plan?
I am not sure if Case is going to be helping us out. From my understanding, we were gonna be handling it in-house. And that's why they're gonna be adding the information into the Peer Place, which is a data system that we have in our office. And the Linkage coordinators will be able to go in individually and add in the information about their students for their individual schools.
Do you have, as an administration, have any concerns about doing it in-house? Has been any conflict of interest of any type, is that any concern at all?
No.
Kay, ma'am?
Good afternoon, Council, my name is Leon Harris. So as we talk about C-Tag, just to mention what Director Merriman and Kathleen have stated, Case Western Reserve is already under contract with the FCFC. So they have agreed to assist with data coming out of Peer Place to assist with some analysis of the data and reviewing of that data. In regards to any type of conflict of interest, there is a conflict of interest in my professional experience as an evaluator, that if we fund the program, it doesn't stand up to public criticism or public critique if we were to actually conduct an internal evaluation, which is why we went with Case initially.
So maybe offline, we could have a conversation around what it looks like moving forward?
And Robin did just confirm that Case will be handling the evaluation for, for the C-Tag program through Peer Place that we get.
Was that bid out, was that? I know they had the contract originally when we did the initial evaluation.
Well, it'd be added into, because we already have a contract with them, we're adding it into, in their scope of services because we already have it in, in their...
Add C-Tag into an existing evaluation contract you have? Okay, I'd still like to talk with, what that plan looks like for it offline?
Okay.
All right. Other than that, I, I, thank you. No other questions?
So, I would follow up on that and ask whether additional dollars are gonna be required to be for that addition of the C-Tag evaluation into the Case Western Reserve contract? And if so, how much?
Not that I know of right now, I just submitted the contract amendment. So I didn't think that we were gonna ask for more dollars from it, but I'll, I'll double check with Robin.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Evaluation that did not happen in this last cycle, how many dollars, what was the dollar amount earmarked for that? And I assume it just went back into the general fund? What was that dollar amount?
It was originally $100,000. I would have to look to see how much was actually billed through Case for that year that they did run the program, to see how much was put back into the pot. So I can check on that and let you know.
We'll get back to you.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Now go to our final office of the day, which is the Office of Reentry. And we have an exciting introduction from Director Merriman.
Good afternoon, once again, David Merriman, Director of Health and Human Services. First, I, I know that the, the schedule when it was released listed Leon Harris is making the reentry director presentation. So what I'm, I'm here to announce is that today we selected Simeon Best to serve as the Director of the Office of Reentry moving forward. Simeon will join me in a, in a minute here. Simeon has worked with the county since 2003. He began his time as an eligibility specialist. He worked in customer relations at JFS, and went on to be a part of the Fraud Investigation Unit and ultimately becoming a Fraud Investigation Manager. Simeon then promoted to become the Voting Rights Coordinator, and in his role, he was actually instrumental in helping to coordinate the county's census work for the 2020 census. And at the close of that work, after Crystal Bryant resigned, I asked Simeon to serve as the interim director of the Office of Reentry. He served in that role since April and applied for the position. And through a competitive hiring process, we, we selected Simeon. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask Simeon to come forward, he's gonna make the budget presentation, but I'll be available if there are questions that predate him or he needs a hand. Simeon?
Thank you very much, welcome to the committee, and congratulations on your appointment. We look forward to working with you in this very important area of activity that we're all very much interested in, in and supportive of.
Thank you very much, thank you. Good afternoon, Council, my name is Simeon Best, now the Director of the Office of Reentry, and this is my first assignment, so. Every year, more than 3,500 citizens of Cuyahoga County return from incarceration. These are individuals who are released into the community with complex needs, and there, there's no one single, you know, resolution to their needs. Likewise, there's no single resolution to, you know, eliminating or reducing recidivism, excuse me, recidivism. The Office of Reentry exists as Cuyahoga County's commitment to serve these returning citizens by removing the stigma and social burdens and challenges, challenges that challenge their successful reintegration. The Office seeks to remove the stigma and social burdens by sustaining a reentry movement that provides the full range of comprehensive services, support, and monitoring opportunities needed for a successful reentry. The Office provides direct funding to community agencies and organizations assisting returning citizens. So we are mainly a funder, we're collaborator, convener, but just wanted to stress the fact that we do a lot of funding. We help to lead a countywide reentry strategy that addresses barriers, challenges, and policies impeding individuals' successful reentry into the community. With that, the biennial, biennial budget for 2022 and 2023 remains flat, or is flat. There are no significant reductions or elimination of existing programs, initiatives, or services that are recommended in this budget. The Office has six full-time employees right now, and there are two vacancies. So we're currently working with HR to fill those vacancies hopefully by the end of the year. In terms of new initiatives, the 2022 and 2023 budget is limited and does not consist of new initiatives or expenditures. However, it is important for our office to identify additional funding resources. The Office will explore federal funding with the Bureau of Justice Assistance, the Second Chance Act, to continue to provide vital reentry services to the community. We are also exploring additional opportunities in collaboration with the Office of Homeless Services and the Department of Development for possible use of our funds for an integrated approach. We support the local justice system here with basic education and GED program in the jail. Our funding also pays for probation officer in the Veterans Court to provide intensive case management services. The Office of Reentry understands how important it is to have safe and stable home for reentrance. Without a stable place to live, you can't keep employment. So the Office funds the development of a housing plan for various models of housing, both long and short term. As we move forward, the Office will continue to promote education and training and the employing of individuals leaving incarceration. This has proven to be a successful strategy in not only a successful reentry, but in reducing recidivism and increasing safety within our communities. I have a short story, a success story, from Towards Employment, one of our providers. Harvey was recently released from prison and living in the city mission in Cleveland when he was referred to Chief Staffing. Even though he has seven felonies on his background, we found an opportunity for employment with diamond medals. We helped him strengthen his manufacturing-related math skills, such as reading a tape measure and converting fractions to decimals. As a result, Harvey passed a pre-employment measurement test and was hired at $14 an hour. In addition, we assist Harvey with steel-toed boots, work pants, work shirts, and transportation assistance. He has continued to receive great reviews from the employer and has fully embraced the opportunity. So that is the presentation, and I'm open for questions, comments?
Thank you very much, Director, and it's time for questions from my colleagues, and the Council President first.
I will, okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hope you have enjoyed your time to this point here, and a few things. There is the book Going Home to Stay. I've said this before, as the new director, I'd just like to know your vision. As, as a councilman who represents the bulk of public housing, and along with my colleague Yvonne Conwell, who also represents the same population I do, I've found that this book has been invaluable to, to the constituents I serve. I can't keep them on my shelf, so to speak. I take them and, and people want them. Now, we've gone digital, we've done a lot, and it's great, God bless it, it's good. But some folks just, it's just better for them to have that book. So I, I just, my thoughts are, I'd like to know your thoughts around it, if you give it any consideration, if the book is something you'd like to bring back?
Absolutely, so we've actually begun conversations with the, the program now, or the organization's called RegenHope. So it was Exodus Planner, but now RegenHope, so I'm actually in the midst of conversation with her now. The plan is January of 2022 to have everything finished with the book, so we can start printing them. And so we wanna bring that back, because we do realize that everyone doesn't have access to the internet and things like that. So we wanna have the book, and I think, I, I've been out there serving the community, it just, it's good to put something in someone's hands so they can reference.
Appreciate that. Next, the, we have a surge going on in the central, the administration has brought a surge of county resources into the central community. One of the things is expungement. Expungement is, is critical. I don't know if you had any involvement in it to this point, but I'd just like to just throw that out as a, just to have that on your mind, to be able to go into my district and, and the other parts of the community. In fact, it's not simply there, I've gone into Garfield and other, first ring, my first ring, inner-ring cities, and response is just a little different, they, they may come to me quietly. You know, I go down to public housing and people, you know, my brother's in jail, he's coming home, and I need, you know, would you, I can't have him on my sofa. But it might be a little more quiet conversation. But those things are important, being able to expunge, and what role have you, have you played in that so far?
So just real quickly, I, I know that we have the record stealing and expungement on the, on our website. So it's, they can go on there, and then it links them up to Case Western Reserve with our Second Chance Reentry Clinic, and so they can begin, you know, make application for that expungement process. I don't know if there's more?
And specifically, are there any dollars budgeted for that you?
Good afternoon again, Council, Leon Harris, Assistant Director of Health and Human Services. I've been an integral part of the central surge, or the efforts on the central surge. We have had conversations with stakeholders, residents within the central community regarding employment, regarding, which, which leads to expungement. And we plan to definitely introduce Simeon and bring him on board to have those discussions and be a part of those meetings, so that his office can also be, contribute to the efforts of the central surge.
Okay, my last question is around the, the social entrepreneurship projects. These were council initiatives, the Central Kitchen, where Lutheran Metropolitan Ministry is, is running an actual business. We gave them initial dollars a good eight years ago, probably six years ago, maybe. But, no, no, it was eight years ago, literally was eight years ago. Gave them a larger amount of money than more, more so than towards employment, but it was a one-time. They get, got those dollars, they created a company, and they are serving and selling food. They sell to the homeless shelters, and while they're running an, an actual business, they are mentoring the reentry population in food service, hair care, and, and Signature Lounge, and a few other areas as well. Since that has been budgeted one time and no additional dollars, I don't necessarily wanna know about money, because I know there is no money. We're just getting a return on our investment, the longer they continue to do what they do. Can you speak to us in terms of what we are getting from the Central Kitchen in particular? Get inside in terms of dollars?
Councilman David Merriman, I wanna, I wanna speak to that, because actually that was a great investment. I thought it was a very insightful program, and it's really changed the way that our system works. Couple ways in which that investment has really been leveraged in our community. First thing I would say is we would not have been able to make it through COVID and our homeless strategies that have enabled the, the homeless shelter to manage COVID. Just to, for this council, I would have you know that we had less than 5% positivity when we've done COVID testing in the homeless shelter. It is so, it's such an exceptional figure, it's worth repeating, less than 5% positivity, and that is metro health testing homeless people that are in shelter. The way we were able to do that is we did utilize hotels and other, other, other housing situations. But we were only able to do that, to use those hotels, because we had Central Kitchen bringing food. COVID had such a detrimental impact on our restaurants. I doubt that restaurants would have been available to provide the volume of meals, three meals a day, that Central Kitchen was able to do. They brought clam shells of food that we put in front of every room so that we didn't increase congregation while people ate. That was only possible because of Central Kitchen. I think it was instrumental, and it was, they did an outstanding job. Second thing that I would say about Central Kitchen, Lutheran Metro Ministry has recently joined the Job and Family Service SNAP 50/50 program. And what that program is, is that they, they're now looking at the residents that use the Central Kitchen program as a training opportunity. And they, they are, they're not just reentrance, some are, some are homeless or formerly homeless, and some just wanna, wanna explore culinary arts. So those residents that go to Central Kitchen, they get their Serve Safe certificate, they go through the education process, are now being, we now look at whether or not they're on SNAP. And if they're on SNAP, we're assessing whether or not we can get reimbursement. Because they built that formal structure of having a training program, because they built the infrastructure to be able to have a credential, actually, associated with the experience, they're now in, in position to be drawing federal reimbursement for their training. And those, those residents are now being prepared to take jobs in restaurants and other institutions in our community. It's been a great success, a last example of, of how it has been leveraged. Prior to the pandemic, we were working, working with Lutheran Metro Ministry. When we received word that the Board of Developmental Disabilities no longer had the ability to staff the kitchen that was located at, at the Virgil E. Brown Building, they changed their model. They tapped Lutheran Metro Ministry to come in and take over operation of that kitchen through a related program, Chopping for Change. They were placing women in prison, not, not released from prison, women in prison in that kitchen. Unfortunately, COVID stopped that program. We couldn't have those women come and serve meals at the Virgil Brown Building. But Central Kitchen and the staff that support Central Kitchen were able to come. They now staff the cafe at, at Virgil Brown, and have been able to have us continue to provide food, great meals every day of the work week in the Virgil Brown Building, so the staff there can get a, a breakfast or a lunch, and, and don't have to leave the, leave the building and possibly take more of their time. So the three examples about Central Kitchen has really been critical to us, I find them to be a great partner.
I appreciate that, and just a reminder to this council, this is a council-sponsored initiative. This council brought this to the table. My, my last question is, remind me of the dollar amount that was initially given that this council moved back in eight years ago for the Central Kitchen. What was that dollar amount?
We'd have to research that, I don't know that, we'll have to come up with that.
Towards employment, God bless, they're doing great work, but they, they got more than what Towards Employment gets. What is the dollar amount that Towards Employment gets?
Yeah, $400,000.
How much?
$400,000.
All right, so it was, it was more than that, but again, the return on investment is, every year is reduced. Excellent return on investment. Thank you.
I'm noting the presence, presence of Councilwoman Simon for the record, and Councilwoman Simon is next.
I just wanted to first welcome you on board officially today. I appreciate it. I don't serve on that committee, so I won't see you as often as everybody else who serves with the chairwoman. But your budget, I know this is new to you, this is your first day, and you said the budget is, seems to be adequate. Do you foresee any new programs that might not fall within the, the budget range we have before us that you'd like to put into place?
Maybe not new programs. There are things that we want to increase and enhance on, and I talked about the housing and how we're going to probably collaborate and do that with homeless services for using, possible use of ARPA funds, and we're just exploring that. So that is kind of the only, I guess, addition I would, I could foresee.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Conwell.
Thank you. To the chair, to Director Best, congratulations for starting today. Yeah, to piggyback off of Councilwoman Simon, that was one of my questions because the previous director, prior director to that has always have, has always had a drive to have these kind of programs like Chomping for Change. We have several out in the community, the salon, things of that nature. So I don't want you to lose sight, sight of that. Maybe realigning your thought process when you're looking for ARPA funds, but I know you have to have an initiative to go for because they've been very helpful with helping people, giving them a second chance back into the community. So that, I would really start off saying that. The two vacancies that you talked about, Director, what are their functions or titles of these vacancies? And since you're seeing it from a new perspective, do you think they're, they're needed?
So the two vacancies are the fiscal officer and then the program officer four, which is our communications manager. So I definitely see a need for both of those positions, and that's why we're working with HR to do our best to get those filled before the year's out.
Okay. And the fiscal officer, where did he go? I think I remember talking with Crystal before she left, but.
The fiscal officer, Bonnie Thomas, she, she went to another court. Not sure exactly.
So outside of the county?
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't remember. Okay, thank you. And.
Councilwoman, if I, if I could say, you know, Simeon and I discussed whether or not to fill those positions. We felt it was inappropriate while he was interim. We felt that would be a responsibility of the person selected to do, to do the job moving forward so they could choose their team.
Okay. Well, just because of the topics that we're having here with the administration and vacancies, I just wanted to clarify that. My, my final question is, what is, direct to the chair, to the director, what is your, your office role with the Diversion Center? Or how do you plan on utilizing the Diversion Center?
We, right now, haven't been involved with that process, but we do see it as a benefit to the community. And I'm definitely open to having more conversation, to be more involved, you know, if that opportunity presents itself.
And where I was going with that was, and I didn't think you had a direct, but since you're community reentry, those would be individuals that you could maybe align yourself and, and follow and, and, you know, share what we have to offer in the Office of Reentry so you can move them forward.
Currently, it's right next to North Star, who we fund. So that makes all the sense in the world, to try to kind of, just like you said, keep track with them, engage with them, and, you know, track their progress. So definitely something to consider.
Thank you.
So the question I have is from the budget book as to why the budget for 2022 and 2023 is about 10% less than it was in 2021? And does this reflect any actual reduction in services programs or staffing level?
I'll answer that. I believe that, that the budget that you're responding to, the $145,000 that are less, that relates to the open, open positions. It also relates to the, essentially, the vacancy of the director and that we're going to fill those positions. Simeon's going to fill those positions.
So given that, that we now have a director and you're going to, you're going to fill the vacant positions, do we need a larger budget allocation than, than is presented?
It's a fair question. I'll, I'll, I'll consult with Director Parfiao and find out if that's an adjustment that needs to be made.
Okay, let us know.
Thank you.
Councilman Shawn. Welcome, and congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
I think that we have been, I think, known as a county on a national basis because of what Brandon has done at Edwin's Restaurant. That's a microcosm of 3,500 individuals coming back to this county. I really believe the unintended consequence, unintended consequence that occurred with the sector partnership was a focus on the skills and development that Brandon has done at Edwin's to move that same concept into manufacturing. And, but for the, the pandemic slowing down employment, I think we have placed, I believe, like 60-some individuals without a single day of recidivism out of that entire workforce. And I, I know that I speak for the other manufacturers on that, that the expectation is to place three to 400 more individuals in every year. And this skills labor shortage is just a, a prime, perfect storm for us to be doing a solution that solves, helps solves the reentry problem, helps solve the workforce problem. And all you have to do is do some simple business math that says that an individual incarcerated, I think, is around $65,000 per year cost to the, the state and do some, and converts that to a $35,000 or $40,000 a year taxpayer. I just, I think we are just primed to be the reentry example for the entire United States if we can build upon what we're doing. Because what we did with the sector partnership, and I know it was not, it was not intended, the private sector stood up and said, wait a minute, we need a workforce. There's a, there's 3,500 people coming back to this county. But Bing, there is a solution. We just need to figure out how to put the two together. And thank you for you and your predecessors working with them. And I would highly suggest you get to meet, your, your call after tomorrow should be with Adam Snyder, who is leading the, the sector workforce around manufacturing, because that same model should be used in the medical community with their sector. IT, I don't know how easy that will be, but I know that, Director Merriman, you know, my, my belief is there should be a fourth one, which should be hospitality, and that should be a slam dunk with what Brandon has done. And guess what? Maybe there's a fifth one, the county itself ought to be example of how, why, why, why on earth shouldn't they follow the model of the sector partnership? I mean, we shouldn't be last, we should be first out there and, and follow the model that we did. So good luck to you, congratulations. We should be known on a map that this is how you do it. Brandon speaks all over the country about his model. Obviously, he's been successful because he's opened Restaurant One, Restaurant Two, The Butcher Shop, The Bakery. And it just seems to me that this is a, a perfect, you're catching this at a perfect time. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So I totally agree with Councilman Shawn that in today's employment market and with the workforce development assets that we have in this community, that we should really be, be a model for the country on what we can accomplish on reentry.
I think I mentioned to you earlier also that one of our young men that's joined us from the reentry program, we, we congratulate him because he has his first baby just two days ago, and gave him a pack of diapers and all the other things that, that new babies need, so.
Any other questions? Hearing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this completes our hearing for today under miscellaneous business. I would bring to everybody's attention that we have two heavy-duty budget hearings coming up. The next one is on Monday, the 25th at 1:00, and we're going to have something like 11 or 12 different general government agencies. And then the following Monday on November 1st, we're going to have, have all the, the courts come in. So that's going to be very important as well. And other than that, I would just say, go Browns. And if there's nothing further to hold our attention, seeing nothing, we are adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody.